I called order our special city council workshop.
I'm getting old camera things.
April third. Second item on the agenda, discussion of the Guthrie Code on Noise. Staff, Leroy, are you taking the lead on this for a little bit?
No, there's the chief.
He's the chief.
The police chief did the research and he's going to do the presentation and he's by far outdone me on the good looking charts and stuff.
Alright, these are good looking, chief.
Thank you.
Alright, see what we got.
Alright, so I got a little bit of PowerPoint that kind of outlines what, what the issue is. So on the second one on the bottom there it says, you know, we're having issues with, with Roosters and the neighbors. Roosters at three twenty-two West Oklahoma, it is a central business district zoning. And then we have several neighbors that, that have contacted us. Three twenty-three West Cleveland, three twelve West Oklahoma, and three twenty-eight West Oklahoma, they're all zoned in central business district two. On the next one, I've got the applicable slides, or the slide that has the applicable ordinances. Interestingly, when I'm going through this, I think we have more noise ordinances than any other town that I came across. Which, which is a little bit confusing.
And those were in your agenda bucket.
Yes. Probably the one, the complaining parties like to cite the most is the one that has the midnight to seven AM restriction. Interestingly, they start calling about eleven o'clock. So, that, we'll go to the next one with the issues. The neighbors, one or more or multiple complain nearly every Friday and Saturday night, so we end up, the police officers end up going in there at least once, if not more often.
Going inside the building?
Going inside the building to make contact with the owner and ask them to turn it down, comply with ordinances, and tell them that we basically receive complaints. Roosters, of course, has their live music, so, I mean, that's, that's kind of maybe the lifeblood of, of these types of establishments. Being able to draw people in on Friday and Saturday nights, and live music helps a lot with that. But when we bring live music in, the neighbors complain even more. And of course Roosters feels that us being in there all the time really cuts down on some of their business, which I can see that. I mean, people are in there drinking and having a good time and they don't want to see the police around, especially more than one night or more than one weekend. And we're there every weekend. And then Roosters feels that, you know, why, why would we give him a license to be down there if we're just going to be down there picking at him all the time for the noise? The neighbors, it says one, but there's two residents that have contacted me. They don't want any changes to the ordinance, except that they would be happy to move it to eleven o'clock, eleven PM instead of midnight. So I don't know. One of them feels that, that Roosters consistently violates the ordinances and wants more citations written. One of them feels that they've become more flagrant about their violations since we've been going down there. And, and they're all looking for a good quality of life. We run into problems when we go down there, we tie up a lot of our time. We may or may not issue citations. We've, we've had problems with the municipal court wanting to honor those citations, just because part of, part of the issue there is, it's such a subjective enforcement. Well, it is a bar, and it backs up to these houses, but, but it's subjective, so he, you know, sometimes the judge is like.
What houses?
Well, apartments, whatever.
What apartment?
Bed and breakfast, you mean?
Whatever you want to call it.
Are you talking about Magnolia?
Where would the other neighbor be?
Magnolia, and then Mr. Coffin's family over here.
Ben?
Then there's a private residence as well.
And then there's, yeah.
Okay. The shares a common wall?
Yeah, they share a common wall, we've had other issues with that, smoke leaking through and, and that's.
So the bar shares a common wall with the other, that would be a drag?
Yes, sure, sure, but, I mean, I think the one in that house has lived there for four and a half years and, and I, I think that the bar being there before they were there, so, I mean, I don't know.
That's not saying anything to me.
Right, right, right. And then, you know, we, we feel that, or the, the police department looks pretty incompetent in the city by not having the, the appropriate ordinances to finalize, to be able to finalize the matter. And then some things for you all to discuss, to consider as we go through this. Roosters is allowed down there with a special use permit, so, I mean, that's okay according to our zoning stuff. We don't have any delineation between the different zoned areas, so whatever constitutes a noise disturbance there may, will constitute a noise disturbance at your house. Or at Jeff's house way out in the country, even though it's inside the city limits. And then, we run the risk, if, if this kind of spreads throughout the CBD, the central business district, we, we could have a lot of other issues with some of the other events that we put on.
Well, that was the question, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Will they go past midnight?
Some of them.
Some of them.
Well, bars are allowed to be open till two AM.
No, 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 these events.
I think some of the Red Brick Nights do.
I think Red Brick Nights does, and then like, what's, it's not, it's not a, an established bar, but the way, one of our special use permits things is like the beer garden thing. And so like at homecoming, when, when Vaughn, right, takes up the whole street down there, if one of the neighbors upstairs decides to call in and say, hey, they're disturbing the peace down there, I guess they are.
Got to shut it down.
So, I don't know. So, so from doing a lot of checking, this is not really popular in Oklahoma yet, there's only about four or five cities that I can find, but it's kind of spreading across the country on this decibel specific thing. And mostly what they do is, the ordinances are long and convoluted because you have to know when, where, and how, and what weighted decibel to use and measure, and blah, 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 blah. But, it does solve one of the problems, I think, with our, with our judge, and, and it's no longer objective, or it's no longer subjective, it becomes objective. When we say, look, you're zoned for this, and you know, past this hour, past sunset, you cannot exceed this decibel limit, measure fifty yards from your property line, or whatever, however we end up putting it. I'm not going to tell you, that's the be all, end all answer, I can't even tell you, I'm, I'm just telling you that's becoming a lot more popular, mostly for the reason that it is objective. So you all say, hey, in, in the CBD, after sun goes down, according to Farmer's Almanac, we're not going to exceed fifty-five decimals. Or whatever, you know, whatever number you choose to pick.
How loud is that? Do we have an idea?
We, if, if you look on your longer page here, it kind of tells you, right, a clock is thirty decimals, a quiet garden's forty decimals, a TV is fifty decimals, and goes up from there.
Regular, between regular conversation and office noises, sixty decimals.
Where are you living at?
Oh, you're living at that. On the big page.
Wow, that's not very much, then, is it?
It's like right here, right now.
But if you look over here in the clear section, I mean, they set, let's see, like the city of Midwest City, for instance, in an industrial, there's your seven decimals. Commercial at night is fifty-five decimals, commercial during the day is sixty decimals. But you go over to Piedmont, in commercial during the day, it's eighty decimals. So, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of room in there. It's just, if, if you choose to go that route, there, there again are more things that will have to be considered. What are we going to set it at? Is it the same decimal all the time? Is it different for day and night?
Many Oklahoma State statutes has no.
No, Oklahoma State statute has even more generic than ours are.
You just want something definitive.
Yes, yes, I mean, something where, where, it's, it's hard to, it's, it's hard to play when we don't know what the field consists of.
But we want something, the, the central business district is a mixed use district, because in our zoning, you're allowed to have residential in with commercial. A lot of towns segregate that, and you cannot have residential in a commercial district. In our case, we build up, so anything lower you can do in the next zoning. So, we have residential, commercial, mixed in the CBD, and what we'd like is something that is definitive, but also is something that is reasonable for quality of life for residents that live down there. But also is reasonable for entities that are trying to conduct the business that is using Corey in it, if we're going loud enough.
Other complaints about it, like Vaughn's place?
What are the other complaints in the entire city other than this one deal?
This is.
So we're going to change the whole deal for one?
Everybody else is willing to.
Well, even still, we, we do have, we do have noise complaints on a regular basis, okay? And again, I think, I think, a lot of people are tired of dealing with this one, because it's not just Mr. Arigo that's having to deal with this, we had to deal with, with Mr. Causal before, Causal Call before. But, again, when we get to the municipal court, the judge is kind of weird about, it's just me showing up there and saying, you're, yeah, you're violating the, you're disturbing the peace.
Well, I can appreciate that if there's.
This is just the one that's most consistent, I guess.
What did you do to that clock?
It's like that.
Oh, I bet.
That's pretty cool.
I have a special thing on my clock.
I, I can see where the, where the judge is looking for something that is definable, measurable. Six o'clock. And, and I think, I think we, I think we ought to move towards that.
And that means that when you're going.
We've got to have the equipment to measure it, too.
Fifty decimals is not much, so let's say we had it at fifty and you're going down the street and you started laughing with a couple of your friends that came out of town, boom, you got a citation.
Yeah, I think, I think the ordinance reflects that it has to be repetitious.
At this table right now, we are speaking at between, well, right now it's bouncing between ninety decimals.
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Between seventy and ninety decimals at this table right now.
No.
Well, and that, that may not be true correct, just because I've, I've, I've done so much studying on this, I never knew there were different kinds of decimals. And so, one thing, if, if you decide to go with decimals, for, for most of the time, it's, it's, it's got an A weight, so it's a DBA decimal. And then if, if you think you're having problems with bass and stuff like that, then we, we need to throw something in there about DBCs, C weighted decimals.
Well, and I, I think, I think that's legitimate, in fact, the bass is usually the thing that drives.
Many times.
The residential people crazy.
And I said yours probably right, because I don't know if it's just.
Well, no, this is straight DB across the board, you're right, there are for bass, because there's certain things, being in audio and doing audio, there's things you would not hear in the high end where, and bass does not expand until, like these big boomy cars. You can't hear it in the car, but a block away, it's rattling the window, it doesn't have time to expand.
And, and I think the chief, what he's saying is, we'd like something definitive, but we're not positioned not to recommend.
Right. And, and I, this, this, I gave you, I gave you this other one, and this has all the complaints from all the parties, I, not complaints, but, I sent them all letters saying, hey, give me your thoughts, opinions, whatever you want. So, that is there for you to review as well. And then the final piece is, this is the city of Piedmont's sound ordinance, and you can, you can flip through there.
Yeah, but they don't even have a town, a downtown.
Well, I'm just saying, it's closer to our size than Midwest City.
Right. You know, midnight, you have a parkour dog that's out in the backyard and it's barking all night long, I mean, that may not even be the decibel level that is, that comes up to a standard, but yet it is still annoying.
It's keeping you awake.
When the windows are open in the middle of the night, and you've got a dog barking from midnight to four o'clock in the morning, and you've got to get up at four o'clock in the morning. Or running lawnmowers in the middle of the night.
Yes, and that's, that's one thing most other cities have, that ours is very vague on about when you can run power equipment, specifically lawnmowers and the like. And we do have some odd characters in town that get out there at midnight.
What did you think when you said that?
Well.
You're an odd character, bud, you just haven't heard.
Assuming that we move towards something that is measurable, the measuring equipment, is it, is it expensive? Is it hard to, is it hard to use? Is it?
I don't, I don't think it, it will be hard to use, it'll take just, you know, a little bit of learning curve while we get it in and get our guys trained on how we want them to use it. Expense is not a lot, most of these other towns that have gone to that, they want them, their, their only real requirement is that it's certified by, or that it's certified by NSTM, I forget what stands across the top of my head. And I think it's in the three fifty to six hundred and fifty dollar range. So it's not, it's not outrageous, it is an expense, but it's not outrageous and they should last next to forever, you know?
And then is there still a, a distance factor that you go into this?
To take these measurements scientifically, right, most of these ordinance specify, you know, so many feet away from the sound source, or the property line, or the building's edge. And they're all different about where you measure from, but from looking at some of the, the NSTM standards, it really doesn't matter, just so long as you have something that we follow all the time.
If you look at Piedmont's, section eight dash seven oh nine, special permits to exceed noise levels, strike wherever it says city manager or city council.
That's how they work here, that it was. Noise control officer send it to the city manager, I'm not sure how that works out, but he, he didn't feel.
He couldn't get out there at midnight?
So I think tonight, we just wanted to give you, I mean, we have, we have these problems, they're not a lot of problems, but you all, I guess, have to decide whether it's worth us going forward and then, and then providing us with the direction you'd like to see something go. And I don't think we're expecting that answer from you all tonight, that's why we wanted to give you this information, so you have a little bit of time to look over it.
But your staff are spending a fair amount of time, kind of spinning their wheels.
Yes, but, it's not the first time, it won't be the last, and sometimes that's just expected of us. I just think if, if we can work down this path, that the city eventually will get more bang for its buck if I have those guys out doing other things.
And it's not just a matter of the concentration of time, is, we're not resolving it.
What was the other resolution? Is there any other resolution to it?
Well, the resolution sounds like it's some kind of a measurable, a definition that has a measurable outcome that the police can say, can enforce, and that the judge can.
Yeah.
And part of this, if.
When an understanding limits goes a lot bigger than just one little strip of street right here.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're talking the whole community, okay, and I'm just not for it.
I'm thinking we're opening a can of worms if we start trying to come up with specific decibel levels and really nail it down to that. You know, I mean, we live in, I don't know how other cities do it with, that have both residential and commercial or entertainment in the same thing. The only thing that comes to mind is like Dallas, or Chicago, or New York, or one of these places where there's apartments, and there's bars, and there's all sorts of nightlife going on. And they're having street festivals, they're doing this at all times of the day and night in those locations, that, and we're trying to be a, a, a festival destination here in Guthrie. I don't see us trying to put specific limits, we maybe designate an area like the Capital Township Historic District, right here, downtown. It's our entertainment district. We don't have, or we expand, instead of going to eleven o'clock at night, we just say the noise ordinance doesn't come into play in this district until two, when the bars close down. At that point, the rest of the ordinance, I read the rest of the ordinance, if we're having loud noises, yelling, screaming, loud car noises, all that, I think was actually, what was it? It was, I wrote it down, chapter fourteen of our ordinance, fourteen dash one oh three, B, C, and D would apply to that, and that's where the times are at. To just change it to where it's later, the people, I mean, you live downtown, you know there's entertainment going on, I'm sorry.
Are you going to, are you going to, just real quick, I'm going to shut up, are you going to shut the planes down from flying over my property? Because they're loud.
There are always exceptions. Well, it's just like, one of the exceptions is schools, one of the exception is church bells, one of the exception is police and fire sirens, I mean, every one of these have exceptions built into them.
Yeah.
The loudest thing downtown at night is the street sweeper.
And the train.
Probably, Steve, you know.
I mean, think about that, it's just like right next to the railroad tracks.
I know.
You know, that, that's going to wake you up just as much as anything else.
Well, and the CBD rules all the way.
Not like you didn't go to the area where there was already a lot of noise, you put a bar in, you know? So, do we do this, you said not city manager, but city council, do we do that? Do we give them a warning?
No, no.
We do not have a special.
We don't have anything like that.
Not like, not like Piedmont.
So, so nobody was ever notified, or just put in, right? Well, according to our zoning ordinance, this area is a CBD, so it should have went through the process of having a special use permit before this bar was put in.
Right.
But, the way our ordinance book is written, the, in the narrative, it doesn't show a CBD district and stuff, so there may have been an oversight when this happened. But, but when you go to the charts, like for in the CBD districts, which this is, drinking places, bars, beer gardens, bottle clubs, private clubs, nightclubs, taverns, all require a special use permit. Which meant it should have went to the planning commission and then on to city councils. Now, I don't know that the city has followed that procedure in the past, but we will be following that process in the future, because that's what's spelled out in our ordinance. And if, if we didn't follow it in the past, I don't know we should punish anybody that didn't follow that the city didn't go through that process.
Would, would not that have been grandfathered due from the prior usage or not?
Normally it depends on how long something's vacant, and if it's vacant, or certainly the time you lose the grandfather, I don't know how long it was between the two operations. But I don't, I'm not suggesting that we go back and enforce an ordinance on someone that's already in an established business. But I think going forward, if there's a, if it's vacant for a period of time and somebody else moves in, or if it's a new establishment, we should follow our ordinance.
So, if I'm hearing what you're saying, is let's hypothetically, if we did something on this, then we wouldn't enforce this deal? Because they're an existing business?
I, I think it, it's difficult to go back after somebody's been in business and tell them, hey, the city didn't recognize it, you didn't recognize it, we didn't follow the process.
Well, here's the thing, that's the only complaint in the town.
Yes.
Okay, so why would we do anything then if we're not, why would we change something to not enforce the only complaint that we only ever have?
Yeah.
That makes no sense.
Are you saying that?
It was the whole neighborhood, that'd be.
Are you saying that we wouldn't enforce the noise ordinance?
No.
That we wouldn't enforce, that we didn't get special use?
Right, we would enforce the noise ordinance.
Okay, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't enforce.
Special use, didn't get special.
They didn't get one.
Okay.
That's, that's what he's saying.
Okay, okay, because I was real confused on that, thinking, why would we do that?
But they would still enforce.
Because I'm not sure that Ed's establishment got a special use permit.
I have no idea, that was before, that was open before I got in.
I know.
Do we have a question?
I'll defer.
Identify your name, address.
Okay, my name is Joe Craven, I live at fourteen twenty-four West Warner, here in Guthrie, playing a band, one of many bands that is employed by Lewis at Roosters. I, I think in my mind, there's two or three different things that, that work here. One is, if I'm correct, chief, the city ordinances apply citywide, it doesn't matter if it's residential or commercial, you got it correct?
Correct.
Okay. The second thing is, as you've already mentioned, there's not a measurement. The, the application from twelve AM to, I think it's six or seven AM, says it's plainly audible at a distance of fifty feet, but plainly audible is not defined as far as I am.
I don't believe it is in ours.
And thirdly, the, the instance that we're talking about, the only one in town, is between a hundred and two hundred feet from a railroad track, where the horns, is it twenty-four or twenty-eight times a day, the trains come through.
A lot.
One of the residences, which is also used as a business, is a former amphitheater that was designed for music and live performances. So it's a little ironic that that is one of those sources of complaints, is someone that's also in the business of industry. Am I correct that if someone called in on the marching band, the marching band would have to shut down or risk a violation?
Well, I think that if it was after midnight, I mean, from what I'm thinking is that.
Well, the ordinance, specifically it says after midnight, but there's.
But you have all the ordinances in there, leave it wide open.
Right, yeah, yeah.
A bit moving fifty feet.
I don't like any of it.
Football games, baseball games, just about anything someone wanted to call in on, the way I read the ordinance currently, they could do it. Though I think if we had a commercial district, but different, like you said, shut it down at one AM or two AM instead of midnight, that would solve the problem. And like I said, if you wanted to go to having a measurable criteria, that would probably help as well.
Well, and maybe that helps on the band thing too, maybe if the band has to shut down at one AM, or I'm just picking a number, whatever that number is, midnight, I think they want it at eleven. Whenever it is, then, you know, does that solve the problem without having to put a noise ordinance in, into play?
We almost always stop at one o'clock anyway, we used to play from nine to one.
And that's your, that's your draw, that's what draws people into the business, correct?
That's what we try to convince him anyway.
If I may.
Your name?
Louis E. Regal, I'm the owner of Roosters. You're, you don't get your crowd, even if they start up at nine o'clock, your crowd's ten, eleven o'clock. We play to one o'clock, we try to keep communication with the neighbors, and, and I would send out texts, I have, except for bands, I have the phone numbers to the other two people. And I will send, I'm having a band this weekend, that's the way we started out, especially with the person with the amphitheater. I would say I have this, or he used to say, hey, we've got guests back there, okay, I'll turn it down. When I received a text saying, I hear it, the bass, bass is usually, every other Saturday I have a DJ, and that's where the bass really gets loud. And I have always, and will always continue to turn it down when asked to, or when it's bothering somebody. My neighbor, this one guest of me, Renee would say, I hear it over here, can you turn it down? I'll tell her, we're going to do that now, then I'll text her a few minutes, can, is that better? She'll say, yes. Normally she's not, and she has complained a few times, and she has came over and told me she has, noise outside, people coming and going, or somebody wants to sit in front of her building, which I can't control that. We try to enforce the way, once they're out there, but as far as the noise goes, it's always going to be, Gary's going to have noise back there that interrupts everybody, but your ordinance does not. It says any noise that disturbs a person, it's, it doesn't matter what time of day it is, and it's, it's not defined.
It doesn't matter if it's reasonable or unreasonable.
How would you have us deal with this?
Well, granted, to keep my business going, and what the people are wanting from me, we have bands till one o'clock. I have no problem shutting it down on the dot, and, and we do do that, they're done, one o'clock. That's, uh, long enough for them, they work regular jobs, and then they come and play. I have done everything I could to damage it, and I mean, to where there's no bass with the DJ, and DJs all about basic, any club you go to. Now, I can, I can modify as much as I can, but it's not going to stop the complaints, I get the complaints called on the jukebox, on the karaoke on Friday nights, on DJ and bands every, they alternate Saturdays. So, I mean, my business won't thrive without entertainment, and that's what I try to provide for everybody here, but your ordinance does not. It says if it bothers someone, I've had the police called at nine o'clock, as soon as the band starts, or as soon as the DJ starts, nine o'clock.
What would you have us do, though?
I'd have you look at your ordinance, I do have a decimal reader, I'll go across the street into the parking lot just to the south of me, at, at a hundred, hundred feet, hundred decimal, I'll put it up there, I don't even register. I can pick up the noise from the speakers on the back of the blowout. When I have a band or a DJ, even karaoke, I'll go to Gary Good's bed and breakfast behind me, and I will read at fifty feet, does not register on my decimal reader. And I can hear, you can't hear audibly, you can't hear the words, you can tell there's music. The city had a employee appreciation last Sunday. I was, on the weekends, I sleep in the back of, I have a apartment in the back, so I don't have to leave, I work till three, four in the morning, cleaning up, I lay back there. I was, I sleep in the day, that noise woke me up, that noise was very loud. You had a band back there, you had a guy on the sidewalk doing this, you had people talking, going through the back end of his, what, courtyard, I can hear everything. And I called the police, asked them to turn it down, music did not get dampered, did not go down, period, I'm not saying the law enforcement didn't do their job. I did see the officer pull up there, because I looked for him, I believe it was Officer Vasquez, I even called and asked which officer went down there, so that I would be sure who I'm looking at. And, and I know. And, and I know Phil Moon very well, and he did show up and done what he was supposed to do. It did not get turned down, it went till the end, and then it went off. But just the same, I tried to, one of the, I, twenty years in law enforcement. When I'm asked to turn it down, I give respect and I do exactly, but what I do do with the chief's man is I ask them to come over to the sound guy with me or the band member, and ask them to turn it down in front of the officer. And every single time, I'll continue to do that, and music has been turned down several times through the night, because it's not the first, they don't just come in once, they come in several times, and I've had a table of ten get up and leave on the second return visit from the police department. So, I, I, I do understand chief's side, cause I, I wore the badge, and I do understand, uh, the owner's side, cause that's me, but, I mean, it's the ordinance. And like I, and you mentioned earlier, I was granted a permit for that place, to do what I'm doing. But it, it's, your ordinance is really hold, it, it, it's got a lot of holes in it. There, there is no limit, it's any time that I bother him, or, or you ma'am, or anybody. If I'm outside yelling, honking my horn, you can call the police on me.
So, what I'm hearing is that if we want to create something that is in fact enforceable, um, that it needs to have specific timeframes, it needs to have, uh, a particular measurable level of decibels at, at a particular, um, measurement of distance, and it needs to be for some duration, it's not, it's not one horn going off.
Correct.
It's, it, it's, it's, it's noise that is going on for a period of time. So, those are four things that I would see we would have to put into, and in, in enforceable noise ordinance. Or, forget the whole thing, cause there's, it's just frustrating, it's frustrating, it sounds like it's just frustrating everybody.
Or, I mean, I guess, if you wanna do a quick, easy and dirty, you can do, hey, when it comes to CBD, you know, if a, if a live band or other music's playing, it doesn't apply until one o'clock, two o'clock, whatever you wanna do. But, of course, you got the other side, and they're not here tonight, but the one that cut off even earlier than it already is.
But the, the, the thing that worries me is we want to be a, a destination, a concert destination, an entertainment destination, and.
Strip it down.
We, and, and if we start, if a person rents a, a room for a bed and breakfast inside of a town that is known as an entertainment destination, it looks to me like some responsibility lies with them, or the owner of the B and B to say, okay, we're an entertainment destination.
Sure, it, it's on both sides to be reasonable, and, and we, we've reached a point down here where I don't, I don't think we're gonna get any closer to the center, I think y'all are gonna have to solve it.
We're gonna have to do something then that specifies to, to both sides. Here's a time limit, uh, at which time you shut down. Those in the B and B, there's a possibility that you could be confronted with entertainment until one o'clock, and after that point in time, you won't be. We've gotta do something to protect both sides, because it's not.
Well, aren't you shutting down at one right now?
The music.
That's what I'm talking about.
Live music.
You can't shut the whole bar down, that's not fair.
Well, we're legally allowed to stay open until two o'clock.
Till two o'clock.
Why do you shut it down, what?
The music, because, uh, they start at nine, which gives people time to get home, get, do what they're doing, come out. Nine o'clock seems, is a reasonable time to start, so they run four hours. Bands normally in any other venue run four hours, most generally. And we have them, now, there is, uh, other genres that are louder, and we also tell them ahead of time. If I have a rock and roll band in there that I know, like Uncle Z plays Led Zeppelin, live music, we'll tell them, look, we're gonna get a complaint, we need to start out low, and bring it down. If we get police presence in here, you see that, let's bring it down lower. I do run out on every band with a decimal reader and try to make sure I'm not affecting the people to the north of me, the Bed and Breakfast. I got a complaint one time by the owner of the Bed and Breakfast, who wasn't even there, because somebody inside that slept, they were sleeping in that back room there, it's just right behind me.
Right.
And those buildings do not have crupper insulation.
That was my next question.
Can you do anything with, with noise abatement in the building itself that would damper the noise escaping outside the building?
Not being an owner of that building, the Ames Building, it would be one costly deal for somebody like me who's leasing. The owner isn't gonna do it, no, there's two owners to that building, but it, it's just the same. I can say, why can't the Bed and Breakfast, uh, do a noise dampener on their building? They, they know what's back there, they know what's here, uh, there's not always people back there. And if you look at some of these ordinances, one, one of the big things that they really push is, it wouldn't apply to Mr. Rego, obviously, but before we allow another bar or whatever in down here, most of these have requirements in them saying, hey, you've got to do, you gotta put up sound damping material on the wall, you've gotta do this, you gotta do that. And right now, the city of Guthrie doesn't have any of that.
Right, and if we went through a special use permit.
But that doesn't help.
But again, we wanna, we wanna be the community that makes it easy to come do business in, we wanna be the community that draws everybody in because it's an entertainment district, at least that's what I keep hearing, okay? And but, so how do we shut it down? You shut it down, you squelch a certain part of that, in a big, big way.
Well, and Brian, it might be something you take into account with, I mean, if this is what you're envisioning for downtown, these decibels may be too low.
And I like the idea, I'm thinking the one, one AM or whatever it is type deal, you know, at one o'clock, uh, you know, but then again, where do you make, where do you do the cutoff? Because when we have Red Brick Nights, you shut that down at one o'clock?
Right.
You got to, you gotta be consistent, okay?
I think if you're a wild business that stays open till two o'clock, to come into the downtown area and have fans and stuff in there, which is there in ten to begin with, you have to align the hood to a clock.
What time does Oklahoma City close their?
At two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
Most places do two o'clock, and so stay.
You know, there's still, uh, karaoke that goes on, there's still music, just music playing going on till two o'clock, or until, you gotta shuffle people out before two o'clock. But, most bands shut down somewhere between one, one thirty, just, just as a general rule. But the noise ordinance really shouldn't be started until when the bar closes.
When I first came to town, I lived next door to your facility for three months, cause I stayed in the room at the pet hospital, I never heard you on. I would hear some of your customers. With some of your customers would leave to go home and work on the sidewalks, I'd hear them, but I wouldn't hear your business.
Well, you will hear stuff in that little alcove when people are all smoking and having drinks and stuff like that nature, and that's another thing I don't wanna see get shut down, because with the, the type like that, it's gonna get shut down.
Yeah.
I, I just assumed that that was part of living downtown.
It is, I think that that's.
Now, the first night, you know, about four AM, when the street sweep went by, and I thought it was UFO.
Well, I mean, if you rent a place, a Bed and Breakfast.
It's right next to a bar.
Yes. Why would you complain because it's noisy?
You should go have a drink.
Yeah.
And, and, and it may depend how that Bed and Breakfast is marketed and sourced. The clientele may not know that till they get there.
Well, they know there's a train right there, but they know better than to park in the parking lot.
Depends what's on the flyer.
People are coming from out of town, they don't know what that train tracks are.
Well, they do when they pull in the parking lot.
Well, they do when they pull in the parking lot, but not, not beforehand.
Mayor, if I may, one more, if you'll go to the Magnolia Moon website, Mr. Good advertises his Bed and Breakfast, with all these amenities around here. Seven pictures on his website, two of them are in the inside of my bar. So, there's no way his people who are looking at his website, renting a room, are not gonna know there's not a nightlife right across the.
Well, most people are gonna want that when they're.
Exactly right, my point is, he's using it in his catch to draw them to him. So, that, the people are knowing that there's dancing going on, there must be a bar right there, because why are my pictures of my bar on his website? They see it. Well, it's there, you can pull it up, I've pulled it up a thousand times.
And I mean, you're, you're talking, a, a number of you are talking at it from the standpoint of the business of the, of the bar, but in, in Gary Good's scenario, it's also his business of a Bed and Breakfast that he's trying to also protect and, and have his customers, um, enjoy their evening.
And that's what we're looking, we're looking for something that's enforceable, that's a compromise between, we don't wanna lose either business, right? It's, I mean, they're vital to this community, um, and that's, that's what we're here to do, so you can tell us where to draw that line.
Well, so, so why can't we, why can't we identify decibels and identify a distance, uh, and, and identify a duration, um, things I mentioned.
You, I mean.
And, and, and obviously, obviously, the most important thing is the time. Right now, I guess midnight to seven is our time.
So, what are you gonna do when a, um, what are you gonna do when a Chili's wants to come in or something, and they have a bar, and they wanna stay up until two AM, and they buy a building downtown, and they put it there?
We make sure that they have got appropriate.
No, what we're gonna do, they're not gonna move in, is what's gonna happen, Steve.
We're gonna say, you, you can, you can move in, we have this noise.
They won't.
Yeah.
They will not move in, that's the point.
Then they'll.
You wanna be a destination, an entertainment destination, but you wanna squelch it.
They'll build it someplace else, they'll go someplace else, to another city.
Well, we can all sit here to agree to disagree.
Yeah, yeah, that's all I can say.
It seems like we need to talk about this a little bit more.
Yeah, I agree, I, I, I look for, I think that it's more beneficial if we just move the times and not meddle too much in, in decibel weight, I think that's just opening a can of worms, I agree. Cause it's just too hard to, to police, really, I mean, because you, you get called, it may be out of the range when you're called, but when you get there, it's not, how do you know?
Well, but by, by the ordinance we have now, if we get there and it's not going on, we're not gonna write a ticket.
Then how do we stop the, the police presence two or three times in the evening?
But then that's.
If they, if they decide to move the time limit, it's not a noise violation until two AM.
Okay, so most of it's noise violation time?
Yes, that's exactly.
Well.
For the most part.
If you all pass up saying, there is no ordinance, or there's no noise violation from, you know, whatever establishments or establishments with special use.
Till one AM or whatever. We really need to readdress the noise ordinance and, and tighten it up. I think it needs to be more defined, cause like I say, it's so vague and ambiguous now, it's like.
And it's like on that, if, if you say two o'clock's the cutoff, and my guys go down there at two fifteen, they're still playing, I'm gonna write them a ticket, and I'm gonna be on the judge to enforce it, because it's not subjective, it's objective. We went there and it was clearly happening.
Right.
But, of course, and like I say, this is the one where we focus all the time, because it comes up every weekend, but we're not gonna be able to enforce anything, we're gonna continue to not be able to force it out in your neighborhood, if a neighbor calls in and says.
Maybe that's what we should concentrate on doing, is setting the times specific.
I thought it says twelve o'clock now.
It says twelve.
So, if, if you guys go down there at twelve thirty, and, and, and you hear the noise.
Maybe, maybe, if you hand them what you do at the new ordinance, how about right now, you can, you can violate it at any time of the day.
Yeah, there is no time limit, right?
There is more in there that says midnight to seven.
Seven, yeah.
And then there's fourteen others that we can enforce all day long. And of course, that's something to think about, too, because what happens when you get to make the dog work all night?
I was reading.
Cause I read it, I read it. I, I read it, but that, that.
What's that? Fourteen dash one oh two.
Can we direct staff to rewrite that more appropriately?
I live to serve.
Well, I mean, so that it is more conducive to both sides.
No person shall. No person shall make, continue or cause to be made or continue any excessive unnecessary or unusually loud noise, or any noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of others within the city, within the limits of the city. And that's it, that's it, that's fourteen one oh two.
Fourteen one oh three B is the one that has.
One oh three B has twelve oh seven.
Actually, B, C, and D.
B is the one, that's the one we enforce.
B is, B is the one.
It's pretty ambiguous, maybe we just need to tighten it up.
We'll do whatever y'all tell us to do.
See, that's where I wrote down to, to amend that, and have a district. I mean, I don't see where this is a problem out in the, in the city, you know, other than barking dogs and other things.
It is a problem, but it's not this kind of problem. If, if this was out of the equation, we wouldn't be here talking about it. It'd still be frustrating for us, and be frustrating with us and the judge, but it doesn't happen often enough to, to cause an issue like this does.
So, you think that the, that the CBD, this district should be exempt from this?
No, it should have, it should be, it should have an exception or have a different ordinance for different times throughout the rest of the city.
More time specific?
More time specific in say, the, in our entertainment district, whatever we propose as the entertainment district. And then out in the, the city, and in, in the residential areas, have the times differ, maybe even earlier than midnight.
So, we do have it in there on number B, on letter B.
Right there.
On letter B is from midnight to seven AM, and it clearly says that you not, you can't hear anything audible from fifty feet of the building.
But it stands.
And then another problem is, we don't define audible in our ordinance. Other, most other ordinances really define that, so you know what you're doing, but it does not.
Now, what are you gonna do when you got a big movie that comes in, and part of their deal is they gotta be playing a band at two AM in the morning on the street? You gonna tell them no?
It's gonna be handled by the special use.
That's when we do the special use permit approved by you all.
Right, right.
Or, we change it to a certain time, you know, if we, if we modify the times, they can play as loud as they want it for that certain time within a certain district and then go home.
There're gonna be some exceptions and.
Well, there's always, there's quite a few. We got apartments in almost all these buildings, and all of them are habitable, but we've got quite a few.
And there's getting more and more.
Yeah, it's becoming, I don't know, a cool thing to live, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I.
Studio living.
Yes.
So, so.
Which is why you want to.
So, I go back to, I go to Austin, Texas.
So, you gotta be used to having the noise off, it's gotta be a give and take. You can't just move in, it's kinda like moving in, moving, building a house next to an airport and then complaining the airport's too loud. Cause the airport's been there, or next to a railroad track that's been there a hundred years, and then complaining the train's too loud. Why did you move there to begin with?
Why don't we look at their noise ordinance, they used to just have Sixth Street, now they've got Second, Third, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, Ninth. Okay, and there's residential all intermingled in it, okay, but there's bar districts all through them. And how do they deal with it? Because I'll tell you what, that thing's going till four AM in the morning, you know, it doesn't shut down at midnight.
You're talking Austin?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I don't know how they get by with it, cause there's, there's, I got a buddy that lives right in the middle, we've got a house right there.
Looking up Lincoln Park, Illinois, because it's the same thing, it's like bar, I mean, it's bar, 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 and everybody's there on your stairs and all around it, so how do they deal with it? And people, I mean, that's just right where everybody lives.
People that live there accept it.
And see, another thing is, if we had about.
That's what has to be done really here.
If there was, if there was multiple complaints of multiple businesses all laid out there and everything, this is one.
It is.
It's just one.
But I gotta agree with the mayor on that, in that we've gotta protect Gary's business as well.
We have to protect Gary, I mean, there's.
Make sure that we.
And we've got two businesses and a private residence, and they're, they're all complaining about Mr. Rego's noise.
Well, God gum it.
That maybe is why the time limit thing comes into play, maybe it's just that there are no live bands or, you know, after X amount of time, I don't know.
Well, that's, that, you know, I guess I read that, that we, that that twelve to seven was just everything past twelve midnight, you, 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 you got a ticket for it, for loud noise.
I think this is, a lot of this is residential stuff here, they're not talking business.
But, well, but the problem is, it does not say, and it's not specific. And, and just like, just like I get one person calling saying, hey, I want the twelve AM deal enforced, I get other people calling saying, hey, why can't we do it all the time? So, then we end up like the employee event over there on Sunday, hey, that's loud, I need a police officer.
But the, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that we can, we can write an ordinance um, that takes into consideration people that sleep during the day and work at night.
Well, and I think that's why, I think that's why a lot of people went to the decimal route and said, look, it's whatever in the daytime, it's whatever in the nighttime, and that's what you go with.
Is this only weekends that we're talking about these complaints?
Friday and Saturday.
That's when you get the complaints, and that's when the bands are there.
Fridays and Saturdays is when the bands play, Wednesdays and Thursdays, it's, there's, but there are still, there's other things going on that can be loud on the rest of the days of the week too, it's not, but Friday and Saturdays are the big days.
Yeah.
It's when everybody's out.
Yeah, and, and I think it's, I think it's a function of, of the duration of it. You know, that the bands, you know, karaoke kinda goes up, a little up and down, but the bands play on the whole time.
Right.
And, and if a try to get to sleep at, at twelve thirty.
What's the gray area on B? I don't, I, I just don't see a gray area on B at all. Why a judge, a municipal judge wouldn't enforce that?
Because it's so subjective. Well, I mean, the twelve and the seven, maybe not, but it's like.
But it clearly says it in time.
But we, we're getting calls at nine, between nine and eleven, and there weren't these other ones enforced.
Oh, I see, well, that couldn't happen.
Why shouldn't it happen?
Audible is a part that's ambiguous.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, you know.
Shut the crickets down.
That's crazy. Yeah, you know, clearly audible is, is, is a, a bad definition to try to enforce or, or to comply with. And I, I think if we're gonna go forward, we need to have some specific level, and specific time, and specific.
We've got another item on the agenda.
Per zone, per zone.
For where we're at.
And per zone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the CBD area is gonna have one zoning, set of rules for their zoning, and then residential area is gonna have another.
'Cause we are gonna have big parties down here, and we're not.
That's downtown, Brian, right? But I don't know how bodies, how do you clean up?
Well, I do have them out there, but you know, it's, I invite everybody when I.
Sure, sure.
Invite the neighbors.
Invite the neighbors. That's the key to keeping everybody happy. I learned that a long time ago.
So, what, so what is, so what is the direction that we are asking staff to come up with, if anything, on, uh, on redefining a noise ordinance? All right, come in. What, what, I mean, what's?
I think we need to think more about, we need, this, we can't decide that tonight.
I think we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to carry this.
We gotta have a big on the agenda, any, we gotta get to.
Talk about more of this, 'cause it's, I.
And that's, I mean, as you're talking about, if there's something you'd like to see, just get with us, and we'll try to have that the next time we bring this up.
I think we need all parties here, I think we need more people in here, I'd like to have, uh, others in here.
And what other entertainment districts have, like Austin, and like Dallas, and Chicago, and all these other places that we're trying to be. Well, how do, what ordinance does they have? And what can we pick and choose from them for residential living?
Try, let's try Oklahoma City.
Yeah, add Oklahoma City restaurant.
Well, the, you know, and, part of the uniqueness, though, is, 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 is the Bed and Breakfast, and is the residential areas of our downtown area.
I understand that.
The others have it too, so let's see what they have.
Down there too, and then, and you've been on the north side of the Bricktown area, where all that stuff's being built, all the new condos and new apartments all down in there.
It's kinda, you gotta have your cake and eat it, too, you gotta figure it out.
And they're, and it's, they're a young generation down there, and they haven't seen anything.
But new construction is probably a different animal than.
Oh, just true.
Yeah, the older construction, because sound barriers and stuff, and the new construction probably makes some difference.
It, yeah, I'm sure it does.
Yeah.
Not all the buildings.
Well.
Maybe we just need to look at everything, at all.
I, I think there's some general principles that we need to decide before we start writing. The fact that if you live next to a football field, if you live next to a baseball field, if you live next to an entertainment center, is it reasonable that there is gonna be a level of noise after ten o'clock? Uh, that's to be expected. And, and that will help in framing the ordinance, or are we gearing it to individuals like me to go bed at ten o'clock? Or earlier?
I guess we're gonna have to draw young people on the council.
Clearing the, and get the old people out.
Yeah.
I mean, when I lived downtown for those three months, there was a lot of noise downtown. I was a lot better in my house out in the subdivision than I did downtown, but to me, that was just part of the.
Where you were.
Yeah, I mean, I.
He accepted that.
Ambience of the city.
Yes.
Including UFO.
Now, I would probably choose that lifestyle for an extended period of time, but it was kinda fun for three months.
So, are we done with this one, and ready to move on, or what?
Well, have we?
We're at the council next.
Have we given any direction?
We got another item here.
Have we given any direction?
Not yet, to, to re- to revisit this, we're, we've just really started to touch.
I think what we can do is take some of the ideals from the other ordinance, maybe continue to do some research, maybe draft some ideals, uh, now, you gotta realize, our first draft's not gonna be the one adopted. 'Cause it, and then have all the players here on both sides.
Yeah, that's what I like to say.
So, they can have input. But we can start drafting something based on discussion, as long as everybody realizes it's not gonna be the draft that gets adopted.
Yeah, right.
Well, I think clearly we need to do something different than what we've got, 'cause this is just frustrating everybody.
Absolutely, this is. It, it's got to an impact where it's not solvable.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Xavier.